Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vick is here today to talk about the Northern Center. With your permission, Mr. Vick, would you please approach the seat there, the hot seat, and give us a chat about the Northern Center, sir?
Let's green.
Oh, Mr. Millburn might have been a little preemptive there, but good welcome to the Ross Common County Board of Commissioners' work session, March 9, 2022. I knew Kenny and Bill had something going. I didn't want to interrupt that either. So, but, and with that, number one, Mr. Beck, long time no see. The last time I seen you was actually had a tour of your facility.
I'm gonna pass out a thing real quick. I have some materials and something we have going on, so I can, a couple of talking points as we go through.
Thanks, Mark.
You have some additions, I'll leave over. We're here. So, my name is Mark Vick. I am the general manager of the Northern Michigan Banker's Center, which houses the Fox Ten Restaurant as well. So, Matt and C should be at one point or another come through our facility. We've been up and running for about three years now. Had the gymnasium banquet open in December of 2018. Got the Fox Ten Restaurant going in May of 2019. And then we've been marching through the events of the last couple of years, marching through the best we can. We have survived, you know, what would be called the economic impact of the events of the last couple of years. Fortunately enough, those of you that know my father, was had a little bit of foresight. He didn't know what this type of thing was gonna happen, but he had foresight. If things didn't go as well as we had planned opening up, we had some other financial things in the background to kind of keep us afloat. We did get a couple of small grants that assisted us through the pandemic. Nothing of real huge significance, but there's another one coming through, and every little bit helps. But, you know, so far, you know, if when Dad and I have our conversations as the owner and the manager, we're confident in the direction things are going. Okay? Our sales numbers are increasing, both in the restaurant and in the event center. As you can see by some of the materials I've printed, I kind of gave a big wide array of photos that shows the types of activities the facility can and has hosted, you know? So, we've got weddings in there, obviously. We've got some pictures of our delicious food, prime rib and wings, and we do caterings for different types of events. We've hosted several fundraising events for some nonprofits. We've hosted some private events for individual families. We had a 100th birthday party, which was kind of cool, and we've had everything from there all the way down to baby showers. You know, so we've kind of been catching them at every step of the whole life phase, you could say. When I say "they," I'm talking about our community. This facility was built with a community in mind. You know, Dad and I never really planned on us getting rich doing something like this. It was more of a contribution to the community that's been good to our family for several generations now. So, to be able to provide an opportunity for, if you were to come down on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon, you would see a wealth of activity with our youth. You know, last weekend, I bet you we had probably between 30 and 45 youth playing basketball, playing cornhole. We even had some of the children come and bring their video game systems and hook them up to our 11-foot video screens. They think that's pretty cool, and we want to build on some of that, too, and provide some additional opportunities for kids in the community that may not necessarily be basketball players or sports players, you know? They want to find something that kids are interested in, and we want to provide that. And we have the facility to be able to do that. We do want to expand some of our youth programming, which will be coming up here in, hopefully, the next six to nine months. As we grow, we want to try to continue to add staff, add help. You know, staffing has been one of our major challenges, as it has been with a large majority of businesses in our area and across the state, I guess you would say. So, being able to march through with staff that we do have that are dedicated. They've been through some tough times, and we've been trying to help them get through that. So, you know, those are some of the highlights, what we've got going on. Coming up, we have some more events. We have some men's basketball leagues and women's volleyball leagues. We're doing tournaments for both men and youth. We have a three-on-three tournament coming up next week. We have Hippie Fest coming up at the end of this month. We have the Whitetails Unlimited is doing their banquet in April. We have a gun show coming up in May. So, you know, our weekends are really starting to fill up, in addition to having been busy with the gymnasium during the weeknights with leagues. We have pickleball players coming in the morning during the week. We're starting to pick up a lot more business conferences. You know, we've had some of the townships, some of the, some other local businesses that have held business meetings. You know, some of the schools have had some, Core had some conference training sessions, professional development days for their staff at our facility a couple of times, too. So, every area, every area that you look at over the course of the last three years has started to expand, and our calendar is getting fuller. Where our calendar is getting fuller means we're doing well. So, you know, challenges, obviously, we have the staffing issue and some of the funding fallout that has come from the pandemic of the last couple of years. You know, it's everything from being able to just obtain to-go containers. I mean, Styrofoam to-go containers. You know, who knew that we'd be running out of the medium-sized ones? So, I have to use a large one, which cost me a couple of extra pennies here, and, you know, trash bags and those type of things. So, those are some of the challenges we've had to deal with, you know? And then overall, outside of that pandemic realm, you know, the most common question or comment that I get from most of our customers, whether they're new or returning, is, "We don't know you're there," or they forget that we're there. You know, and part of that is because of our location. Our location really isn't bad in the grand scheme of things. Those who've been there, we're a quarter mile off M55. You know, we're a quarter mile from Lyman's on the lake, you know, right down the road from Sableau. So, everybody knows where those places are at, but the fact that we're not right on the main drag. However, if we tried to build and do what we're trying to do with our whole vision, we wouldn't be able to put on the main track, because we have four and a half acres. We have an athletic field that we are hoping to complete this summer, so we can start doing some more outdoor types of events, you know? Whether it's a, I just, you know, Dad and I throw ideas at each other all the time about, you know, doing an outdoor show, and maybe some guy from J-Sporting goes, comes down and shows guys how to sight in their bow. You know, I've got a bow, and I don't think it's accurate, and I don't know how to sight it myself. My uncle, who used to, passed away, so now I'm sitting here, how do I sight it in a bow? Well, we can do that on our background. One of my employees last night was talking about his wife teaches yoga, and she's always wanted to do an up-north yoga retreat. Just do a Friday, Saturday, Sunday type thing. They camp out and they do morning yoga, you know, have breakfast, and they do something in the afternoon, and come back and do a skill in the evening time. We have four and a half acres. We can do those types of things. So, we have challenges, but we have opportunities in front of us, too. That's, when I say opportunities, the biggest opportunity that we have was, our original business model was to be adaptable. We can do so many multitude of things that we're not pinned into one particular industry as far as, like, the food service industry. They shut down the restaurants, and they shut down a particular portion of the, of our business, and we're shut down, shut down. You know, now, we were shut down for several months at the early phases of the pandemic. But even looking back onto that, there's some of the things we probably could have done that could have been considered essential, but back then, we didn't know what was gonna happen. We didn't know what the landscape was gonna be painted as, so. But now that we have a little bit of knowledge and a little bit more information, you know, going forward, we're prepared for adversity, and that's just one thing that, you know, Dad and I have tried to do is, you know, like, let's take a challenge and, you know, take the hits, and we'll just kind of keep rolling with it. So, like I said, as you can see, I did include a snapshot or a copy of our Fox Ten Restaurant menu. Just shows you kind of the type of things we do. We do focus on the dinner hour. We don't do the breakfast-lunch thing, but we do prime rib on the weekends, and people compliment us all the time on the size of our menu. So, we do a lot of different things with the ingredients that we have without having to add too many things to my grocery list. As a retired, I hate to say that I'm retired basketball coach, because I'd love to get back into it sometime. Trying to run a restaurant, I'm trying to keep things as simple as possible, but, so we keep our grocery bill kind of minimal, but we're able to do a lot of things with those things. And then the last piece is included in the packet, this is a copy of our gym schedule. Just give you a snapshot of what we have going on on a weekly basis. You know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, we have people coming in playing pickleball. After school, these kids coming in playing basketball. And then the evening times, we get our cardio drumming classes, our volleyball leagues. We've been getting a large portion. People want to come do walking, so we do that. We open up the, whether the gym is busy, they can walk in our banquet rooms, they don't have to walk outside during these types of months. And we try to keep things at a reasonable level for our local community that might not be able to afford $10 a day to come use an open gym, you know? Which is, which is what a lot of facilities, as a basketball guy, end up having to charge, especially in the middle of the year. Just to pay their own bills, you gotta charge $10. Well, my vision of that is, you know, those kids can't afford $10 sometimes. But they might be able to hit mom or dad up for a $5 to come in, and they can buy themselves a Gatorade, and maybe they gotta, you know, shovel a couple extra driveways or move a couple extra lines to earn that $5 to come down and visit us. But it's a little bit easier, and then with its $5, then mom might be able to put out $5 two or three times a week. You know, so you put out $5 two or three times a week, that kid gets three times the experience, more bang for their buck. I guess you could put it in that term. So, try to keep it at a reasonable level, even though, you know, the financials, you know, would say we need, we should be charging more, but that's why we try to do things the way we do with the multiple, I guess I'll finish with this, with the multiple revenue streams that we have, we can offset those costs. You know, I've had, on one occasion, I think it was the summer before the pandemic came through, I counted, I had four revenue streams operating at the same exact moment. You know, then the fitness classes going on outside, they were able to do their little cardio drumming outside. We had kids in the gym. We had a banquet in the banquet room, and we had the customers in the restaurant. But if you have four revenue streams coming in at one time, it helps offset things when, when you have maybe a slow period, you know, like we do, say, this time of year in the restaurant industry. You know, Monday nights, you don't see too many restaurants open, because not too many people go out on a Monday night, for whatever reason. But anyways, that's kind of a picture of what I've got. I guess if anybody got any questions, I can answer those. I'm gonna leave some information here, and I just invite everybody to come down and check this out, whether it's for dinner, or a pickleball class, or shoot some hoops, or gun shows, Hippie Fest. Try to provide something for everybody. So, that's what I got. Any questions? Anything else you want from me?
Sir, Mr. Millburn.
I was just over at your facility last month for Dr. Bob's.
Yes.
I was just over at your facility for Dr. Bob's Town Hall.
Yes.
I hadn't been there for a while because of the COVID thing. I'd been there for the Hippie Fest and some other events. It's a really nice place. And like you say, it's not that far off the beaten path, but you gotta have the room there. Now, I just had the occasion to go up to Gaylord, because a neighbor kid's in a learn-to-swim class up there, and it's the first time I ever went to the Sportsplex in Gaylord. I don't know if that's county-owned or private-owned, but they have a rink, and they have a real nice pool facility. Is there any, any thoughts or wild ideas about doing a ice rink and a swimming pool?
I have a lot of wild ideas. The first, before we start talking those wild ideas, my first comment is, let's pay for this facility first. Once we get this thing up and running to a financial stability point, then we can maybe start expanding some of those things. I know Dad has talked about, with our acreage, we got a little, our athletic field that we try to get done this year. Maybe by next winter, put at least an outdoor rink, ice rink. So, you know, I know Markey Township has something, and a couple of the townships have some other things going on. So, you know, that would be the next phase of that, you know? You know, when the unfortunate burning down of the bowling alley happened. You know, they called me up, said, "Hey, we have our league. We want to get together and decide if we're gonna play somewhere else." So, they came over and had a little meeting at my facility, and they said, "Well, you should throw a couple bowling lanes in here, too." Like I said, you know, the possibilities are endless because of our, the way we built the facility itself, you know? And we try to stay up to date on what the current trends are. You know, I use, I use, when I was going to college, the big trend, I worked at the Recreation Center down in South Michigan, big trend was racquetball, which was back in the mid-'90s or so. And I went back and visited about 15, 20 years later, all those racquetball courts were empty. They converted them into spinning classes or something else, a yoga, yoga studio or something like that. So, some of those trends kind of come and go. So, we want to try and make sure that we try to stay ahead of those trends, find out what it is. We hosted a, one of those trends that kind of came and caught us off guard was cornhole. A lot of cornhole, a lot of facilities are trying to offer cornhole. And one guy happened to come through, because he's playing basketball, dropped his kid out for basketball. He's like, "Man, this place would be a perfect place for a cornhole tournament." You know, because they need high ceilings, they need a lot of square footage, and hey, we got a food license, liquor license. So, coming April 2nd, we're gonna host our first full-scale cornhole tournament. You know, we threw in together in six days and had 15 teams show up with just six days of planning. So, the possibility is endless, and one of the nice things, our very first significant event was Hippie Fest back in the spring of 2019, and it was even before our restaurant was open. And so, that was on a Saturday. I don't know, I don't remember how many people they had, 1,200 people still come through the doors that particular day. And the next Monday morning, I went down to Little Boots and had lunch. I was talking to their staff. I said, "Hey, what happened on Saturdays?" You know, we were just a normal Saturday until the Hippie Fest thing let out, and they were flooded with customers. What that tells me, and knowing the clientele that came to the Hippie Fest, people traveled to the Hippie Fest. They came from out of town to the Hippie Fest, and they came and they brought their money into Holton Lake and to Ross Common County. And that girl that was a server at Little Boots, she probably went home with an extra $90 that night, you know, that she wouldn't have necessarily had. And she's probably sitting there sweating about, you know, her, you know, son or daughter wants to play Little League. How many come up with Little League fees, or, you know, whatever that little expense that that young lady had. And the way I put it is, it's an economic impact, because it's new money coming to Ross Common County. It's different than you and I going and spending money back and forth. Me spending money down at Little Boots, Little Boots comes down and spends money at the Fox Ten Restaurant. We're just recycling that same dollar. So, the economic impact of some of these events that we're doing is what makes me most excited. You know, we've had some gun show people. They come into town, and they get a hotel room on Friday to come to the gun show on Saturday. You know, so they want to get here, and they want to get there early, because they want to get into the gun show first thing, because the ammo is hard to find, or whatever the particular reason is. But that tells me these people are traveling from outside of the area into our area. A unique thing that happened one time, I see my picture of my prime rib, which I'm a big prime rib fan, so I knew eventually it would be, start offering that, but we did a, I did something different. Most people serve prime rib on a Friday and a Saturday, and I decided to offer it on a Thursday and Sunday, Thursday through Sunday. Part of that is because us locals, when the vacations come up here, restaurants are so busy, locals don't want to go out and get that, so they can't get their prime rib, because they're fighting the vacationer industry, people coming in. So, I offered that on a Thursday and a Sunday, so locals can still get it. Something unique happened on one of our first Sundays doing that. I went up and greeted one of our restaurant customers. I asked, "Oh, where were you guys from?" "Well, we're from Calcasas." "Calcasas? How did you make it to the Fox Ten Restaurant on a Sunday night from Calcasas?" Well, the couple, they both work in the service industry, so they work every Friday, Saturday night. They don't get to go have prime rib, so they Googled or whatever they did, and they found us, said, "Hey, you got prime rib on a Sunday night?" So, they traveled from Calcasas to Holton Lake, Michigan to find prime rib. And after they left and went home, I slept on that, and you see, you know what? They're 20 minutes from Traverse City. Apparently, they couldn't find prime rib in Traverse City on a Saturday, on a Sunday night, so they came all the way to Holton Lake. So, that's new money coming to town. So, that's what, that's what excites me the most, is the impact that we can have on the community, whether it's from those new dollars coming in, these kids having a positive outlook, or positive activity to do, to keep them in a positive mindset as they develop in our community.
Well, given that ice rink, next year, I would encourage you to do that. I strapped on my ice skates every year to ski. The Girish Township had an ice rink. First, they had one out on their tennis courts, and then they had one inside the Marina building for the winter, and I would make a point to go over there and send a picture to the Township Supervisor, and me out on his ice rink skating. Well, it's been six years since Girish Township has had an outdoor ice rink, and I would, I would love to send you a picture of me on your rink next year.
I'd love to do that, too. And, you know, and that just shows you the opportunity. I see people post on Facebook, "Where can I rent ice skates?" Because we have a lake that's frozen over. They want us to go see a lake. Well, maybe we can get into part of that, too. You know, kind of like a cross-country ski headquarters, they rent out skis, you can run them for the whole weekend. You don't have to necessarily use their trails. "Hey, yeah, we'll rent you some ice skates for the weekend, and then we're gonna have them for when we have our own rink up and running." So.
At Girish Township, they had the community just donated ice skates. They had a great big cardboard box full of ice skates, and people that would come there that didn't have skates. Most of them couldn't find a pair of them.
Just borrow them, and yeah, you know, we could, you know, absolutely. Those are ideas that, you know, just plant a seed, and we'll put that on my growing to-do list, but it's on there now.
I really heard of it. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ken.
Mr. Millburn, Mr. Millburn.
Thank you for being here today, Mark. Full transparency, I'm over at the center quite frequently with my son, Warren, and it's a lot of fun. I think when you mentioned kids, I think the oldest basketball player is 66, hanging around, so.
One of the oldest.
Some of those kids are really, some of the young talent, third and fourth and fifth graders, there's some kids out there that can really, really, it's really, it's really great to see the people drop their kids off, and they're there for three or four hours, and they act accordingly, and they kind of make sure they take care of each other, and I'm glad you're there. I think it's important for us from time to time to showcase different businesses, and I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. Thank you for the invite, Mark.
Great, nice place.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Tim? All set?
Well, I'd like to mention that I was, I won't say instrumental, but your dad came to me, because I was the zoning and land use guy for Ross Common Township when this came in. So, I was in the ground stages of this and helped him get this thing started.
Yeah, and we appreciate, you know, things like that, you know? And I think I spoke at one of the township meetings shortly after we opened, and, you know, coming from the basketball athletic world and trying to do this thing in a community setting, you know, I learned a lot about the process of, you know, getting certain things approved, whether it's from liquor license at the state level to zoning things at the local township level, you know? And I recognize the significance and the importance of things that commissioners and, and different officials at different levels do to help support us, and we appreciate your support, and, you know, I don't know if it'll ever happen, but maybe we'll come knock us sometime, because we need zoning approval for our ice rink.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. Okay, item number two, County Headley Millage. David and I met last week with the agenda meeting, and with all the information we're starting to get from the transportation. I did follow up on that with the transportation. I do happen to have, Steve Dubois is coming in next week at 10 o'clock, and he's gonna kind of go over their budget with me, so that, he wants to explain in depth what's going on with what their millage request is. So, we put that on hold. But in talking about millage, the county has never had, we put it on the ballot four years ago for the Headley Restoration Millage to get back to, and I don't have my figures right in front of me, and Jamie Houserman is working on getting me some other figures, but if we could put a restoration millage on and get back to our four, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna use, for example, 4.6, and I think we're through Headley since 1984, 1994, we've been reduced to like a 3.64, but don't hold me to those figures, but it's like a percent difference. Am I right, Jody? Anyway, looking at, having some thoughts on it, I want to get the rest of you guys to get some discussion on it. No decisions today. We've got till the 18th of April to make up our minds on any of these millage requests that any organization may bring to us, whether it be a Headley Millage restoration, or if it be the Transportation Authority Board coming with theirs. But anyway, if we could get that approved through the voters, and have to be done through the voters and be presented correctly, that would get us somewheres between probably around $1.2 million to our general fund. The general fund has never had an increase since Headley was put into effect back in 1994. Our millage has been reduced every month, every year because of inflation. But if we could get that $1.2 million, now, even maybe if we're authorized to do that, we don't have to levy it. We can do our budget, say, for next year, and if we only need half a million dollars, that's all we would levy. We would, we'd leave the $1.2 alone. What it entails is, though, is that taxpayers of this county would have to trust the five commissioners to make the right decisions in regards to that. But let's say, and I'll use COA as an example. I know they're their own entity. They have to bring the millage request to us. We okay to put it on the ballot, but maybe they've got a fund balance that they can sneak through a couple more years. And then, but, and then in the process of that two years, trying to get to the next state that they can put the renewal on, they need $200,000. They could come to the commissioners, and we would allocate that $200,000. Oh, I got some information here just popped up. Oh, I'm just looking at them. I'm just looking at this fresh. Our restoration, right? That was pretty close. 4.60 is what we would be going back to. And right now, and it's ranked, and she hasn't got this, I did ask for, I wanted to find out, we have 11 townships and a village. How do they rank as far as all their millages totally on that in their township? I'm talking about whether they've got public safety, all our other millages, be it the transportation, COA, and/or two?
I can tell you that Higgins is...
Higgins is the highest tax...
The highest total rate taxable value-wise, as far as what is collected and brought to the county. Thank you. You are looking at Girish, and then after Girish is Denton Township. After Denton Township, it is Ross Common Township, then Lion Township, then Markey and Richfield. Those are your top five for that, but I believe Jamie gave me...
Markey, Richfield, and Lake are all the same. Oh, 16.
I haven't looked at Lake. Hold on just a second. Lake is at 130. Markey's at 133. Richfield's at 131.
Well, they're all, all three of them are pretty close.
Yeah.
Didn't want you to leave out Lake, right, David?
I know that she did give me the other one, but I do remember when I looked at that, that they were, that's Ken's.
Well, that's your computer. Mine's in front of me.
Yeah.
I can hardly handle one computer, and now you have two of them in front of me.
Oh, here we go. The proportionate report actually shows you every year how much is total collected as far as what the total mills are. Higgins has a lot more, because they have to collect more, because they have a lower taxable value. But this right here shows you. So, just as a, for instance, because I love to pick on my township, a homestead property, total property with the special assessments in Girish Township is 26.5796 annually. That is their millage. If you dropped down to, or drop up to Higgins, you are actually looking at 39.4324, which is theirs. I think that our lowest is Nestor at 22.374, and right after that is Bacchus at 22.88. Those are the lowest.
So, I've had some discussion with Jody on this, and I don't know what the timetables on all these millages are. I do 911 in their report. If you read their report in your next meeting packet. Vance put a nice report in there, but they've looked at their millage, and they're going, they're up for a renewal, and it would be at a .099.07, so they're not looking to going back to their 1% by law that they can have. So, they're just looking at a renewal for 911. You'll be making a presentation at our next meeting for that. But anyway, that 4.6, we could go back to the 4.60. Now, Lenaway County has done a restoration millage a number of years ago, and they got their voters to pass for it. And then four years ago, we did that, and our voters turned it down. But I felt that we probably could have done a better job of explaining ourselves on it.
Well, we asked for it last time around. It's completely different. It's the same thing, but...
Right.
Monies, but words were completely different last time, and a lot of people were getting confused. I believe that's where a rollback, meaning it's simple. made it simple and better.
And so that would be something that we would have to decide if we're going to do or not and we'd have to make that decision before the eighteenth of April to put that on the ballot for August. And what I'm looking at is, of course, with the climate being what it is out there right now, we'd be better off just putting that on and get the county millage through first and then we could address the other millages after that. Just thoughts. Throw in a marker. Anybody else have anything to add? Yes?
Would like to see it. And there, uh.
Moss Sheriff, COA, Transportation, Vets, Animal Control, nine one one. I probably missed one or two. Uh, those are just the villages that I can think of right now outside of my head. I'm always open to new suggestions, but if we're going to do this, we need to bring all the players in. We need to bring in the, the department heads from some of those departments and need to talk to the townships to ensure that we get, they're fully vetted. And I, I know that we've always done that, but it's important for us to bring all the players in. If we're going to do this, we need to have full transparency from all the different departments and from the public, be able to give their input before I'd want to make a decision. We're, we're on a time crunch, Mr. Chair, so.
I understand that. That's why we're discussing it today. I understand what you're asking for, but you know, who's going to pull the wagon?
Well, we got, you know, we can.
You're going to lead the charge and pull the wagon?
I can make some phone calls and we can send, we got email, we got, we got letters, we got the newspaper here, we got, we can fully vet this thing and we.
I know, I'm, I'm just putting it out there for discussion right now. I, I realize that we've got time constraints and I'm not even sure that if I care for the timing right now.
Or pull the wagon, maybe push the wagon.
Either way, I don't care. Ken had something, go ahead.
Well, uh, just to remind the rest of the board, uh, Bob and Jody and I have worked on the budget for many years and this most recent year was, i- if it wasn't for the last minute influx of a new revenue source of eighty-three thousand dollars from the, uh, marijuana growing and outlet and, and dispensaries. I, I don't know where, what we would have cut eighty-three thousand dollars out of our current budget. I, well, you can't put it all on the backs of the employees and start charging them more for health insurance, more copay on something like that. You're going to lose employees or whatever. But I do not look forward to doing the budget this coming year without having something to look forward to as restoring the millage that we need to operate this county as the people of the county expect it to be operated. They don't expect to have cuts in services and only have a, say like a clerk's office only open, uh, three days a week or treasurer's office only open two days a week or whatever. Just because we just don't have the money to continue the services. So I'm a hundred percent behind this. We need to keep this moving in a timely manner and, and get it out there to the public that we need it. It's not just we want it, it, we need it.
Anything else?
I got a couple of questions. Um, you see our deadline's April eighteenth. How is that going to?
Put it on the ballot for August.
For August. Okay. Now, is that the only time that we can put um, renewals or, uh, whatever we're doing? Is there going to be one in November?
Yep.
So we can put some of these onto the November ballot?
Correct.
If possible?
Correct.
Okay. So there's just two, two opportunities this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to pick and choose what we want when? Is basically what you're asking?
Right. I'm just looking, I'm just throwing it out for discussion, which is why it's on the work session is for discussion. Here's.
Opportunities we had this year to get them in.
I just know that it's, you know, it's like Mr. Melber talked about, it's going to be a, like I say, who's going to pull the wagon or who's going to push the wagon? It's going to take a lot of energy and, you know, personally, four years ago, I personally put a lot of energy in it. Um, we did have some, we did, at that particular time, we did have one particular board member that was, was opposed to it and made it, let that be known, but that didn't help us any. So, um, I just know what Lenaway County has done and they presented to the people, um, it would go a long ways to help solve our problems because Ken's right. There's no extra money in that budget. We're at where we need to be on the budget. Um, Jim Anderson has always encouraged us to be at a fifteen percent uh, fund balance and we're there. And it's going to, you know, and we're going to have to struggle just to maintain that. So there's nothing there extra for anything. But yet costs keep going up. So it's an option. It's something to that would help us out and I think would help the county out. I think it's a, I think it's a, personally, I think it's the future. Um, or our county. The next thing is selling it to the voters because it has to go to the voters. Yes, sir.
Well, that's, that's the kicker. If, if we're going to do this, we need to make a decision today how we're going to move forward. At least that's how I feel. If we're going to, if we're going to bring in a special meeting to bring, bring in the townships and the different departments and the public at large to give input, we need to kind of solidify that today from our, from our city. We're only, we're only talking about forty days from now roughly. Are you looking to have a special meeting in the future so we can bring voters in and the department heads?
You know, Mark, I think if, you know, we're discussing it today and to have a special meeting, it's not going to really help. We could discuss it in another work session.
I agree with that too. I just don't want to, I don't want to leave here today not having a plan for two weeks and then two weeks from now we're in the same spot.
Well, I, I'm more than willing, like Dave said, I'm more than willing to put it down for more discussion on the next work session because you can all have access to this information that, that Jody just shared with me right here so that you can understand it. I'm just starting the conversation right now, okay?
And we've had work sessions that have lasted longer than an hour or so. And today, that's what I would propose, Mr. Chair and Vice, Mr. Vice Chair, if we're going to do this, let's have a, a full work session devoted strictly to this as a goal. I mean, there may be some other things that need to come to the work session, but we could have a work session primarily devoted to this one topic. That'd be two weeks from today.
We got anything else to add? So am I?
Alex.
Are the five of us in a, just?
How many do we currently have that are, that want to have a millage this year?
Uh, at this point, what I've been, what I've been told is, yeah, but I've got to, I need to have time to, personally, I need to have time to check that out on all the millages and I'll get with with the Jamie Housman to get that, I asked her for this information and she got it around. I just got it this morning and I didn't even look, can't look at it yet. But nine one one is, has to be go this year because that's going to be a renewal. And I'm going to say that road patrol is the other one.
Those are the only two that must go this year for a renewal.
Okay.
Because I'd be really interested in what Mr. De- is it Dubois or Dubois? Transportation Director would have to say too, because obviously he's looking from going from a point five to a one point. He's asking for a hundred, if I understand correctly, a hundred percent increase.
Correct.
I really want to hear what he has to say.
I, I guess I'm a little concerned sitting here as your administrator controller, listening to my Board of Commissioners speak. Um, and normally I, I try to be really good during these things, but you five, aside from me, know this budget and our stretches of the general fund better than anyone else in this county. That being said, you, you are responsible to educate the public on why Headley is needed. It's, it's your decision on whether or not additional funding is required for general fund departments to continue to provide the level of service that they have. I feel like in eight years I have constantly drummed on creative budgeting, on cuts, on, on, you know, trying to explain that when my district court administrator goes to her conference, she brings back pens from her offices so we don't have to pay on additional office supplies. We sit there, um, five years ago, was that when we had to slash the Marine Patrol budget in half, basically Lieutenant Tippel? In order to continue to fund the housing and filter more money to the jail. The Board of Commissioners has the temperature, the, and the temperament of our county to where you, you know, through your day-to-day interactions and the various other committees that you sit on. We do not have lessening problems. Um, the youth that need to go to Mr. Vick's facility so that they have someplace to go more productive. Um, when there aren't those other entities to put into building an economy, they are ending up in our juvenile justice system. Um, that juvenile justice system at a minimum costs six hundred and fifty thousand a year and that problem is continuing to grow. We are a rust belt where we have high disability levels within our community. Um, that puts more and more service pressure. We have a high number of veterans in our area that require, um, some types of retirement or other types of assistance that folds over into our housing department, which assists with people that can't get propane. So we don't have the ability to change our county with what we currently sit, um, in the general fund. And, and I guess that's my big concern is that if I have not given you the information to realize that we are to the point next year where you're going to be making decisions between funneling enough money into the jail to have consistent and constant nursing services and staffing versus a ORV and snowmobile, snowmobile and Marine Patrol or a controller's office or a housing department. Um, and I'm not doing my job well and I'm more than happy to provide you additional information to show you that. I'm sure that our treasurer will, will back me in everything that I'm saying. Um, so certainly, um, we want to talk to our townships. We want to let them know our needs. But the decision rests with the five Board of Commissioners um, on understanding the budget and, and where we are stretched to. That is all.
You know, other than, you know, when you talk about townships, yes, it has to be voted on county-wide, but actually going to townships and telling them what the county problems are, they don't want to hear that. They haven't got enough money either. They haven't got enough, we haven't got enough to, to take care of our own infrastructure, let alone the township's infrastructure. So, you know, and you say you want to invite everybody in, you can invite everybody in, but I don't see where they're going to have any benefit. Still, the decision comes down to us. And like Ken has alluded to, we've been on that, we've been doing the budget for how many years, Ken? A long time. And we just been every year, it's a, it's a, a cut, 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 cut. And we're to the point now that we just can't cut anymore. Um, and it's going to be a problem just to maintain the services we do have right now. So, um, but then at the same time, you have to respect, you have to respect the voter out there too. How much, how much more money can they pay? I mean, if it's going to be extra here and extra there and so forth. I got my, I got, you know, I got my, uh, assessment last week in the mail. And I had it projected on and mine's going to cost me thirty-nine dollars more next year than what I paid this year. That's just on the township level.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against your proposal, Mr. Chair. I just want to get nine one one and Sheriff's Department and COA and Transportation here. I want to hear what they have to say.
But I.
But does, what, what do they want to say? What?
I want to hear what they, what they have.
Want to say, they want to say, give us more money.
I just want them to be here as long as we can.
What?
I always want more information. Always, always want more information. And we're talking two weeks from today, we can have that, that discussion.
Or I'm confused. For us, for the county.
No, I, I understand that Dave, but the kicker is, is that if Transportation is looking for, I want to know, I think they said they had one point eight million dollars in their fund balance. If I'm shooting from here, they're looking for a one percent increase or a hundred percent increase. If this Headley, if we were to, to approve a Headley rollback, how would this affect them and would he feel favorable toward this? I just want more information. That's all.
Yeah, well, you know, you, you got to be careful when you say a hundred percent increase.
Well, he went from.
Because, and the reason I say that is, is because there's a number of years involved.
Sure.
So that, when you say a hundred percent increase, you're saying to John Q. Public, geez, they want a hundred percent increase this year. No, that's not what they want. They've got years tied, they got years tied to it. I don't even know how many years, but I'm just saying is, is be careful, you know, using percentages. Percentages of what? A hundred percent of nothing is nothing.
Still want his input.
I, I'm just saying is we had, he was here last week, our last meeting.
Present.
I'll bring him back. I'll, I'll talk to him. I, I want to understand what he's going for too, you know, and he's reached out to me to, to meet with me and I said I would.
I mean, I don't, I'm like David, I'm, I'm like a deer in headlights here. I don't understand what bringing in COA or, or nine one one or, uh, minibus. What are they going to tell us? They're going to tell us we don't need to do this?
I.
We know what we need to do. Nobody can, nobody knows our budget like we do. No township official, I don't think, knows our budget like we do. We know what we need and, and we need to ask for what we need. Whatever happens to anybody else happens to anybody else. We can't just go around and say, well, you don't want to jeopardize somebody else's millage because we're asking for something we need.
I think it's, I, 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 I agree with Ken and David on, on this. The point is, is I don't see where we're going to get any value. Now, personally, if you want to do that, go talk to them, Mark. But to bring them in here, all they're going, all they're going to say is, I need more, I need more, you know? I think we need the commissioners, we make the decisions. I agree. We need to decide to do this and I feel we have to do this personally. Um, and then we need to get out there and sell it to the public. Nobody wants a tax increase, but like I say, if we were lucky enough to get it through, we don't have to levy it. We make that decision every year whether we levy it or not. But we could help out these other millages.
All I'm asking, put it on the work session.
I didn't say I wasn't going to put it on the work session.
What I'm looking for.
You were asking for more than that.
Looking for a work session, Mr. Chair.
Yeah?
Um, yeah, I agree with you guys. I mean, we need the money. We got to figure out some way to do it. So if we got to step on some toes, I'd hate to say that, but, um, but we also, if we do get the millage, we would be able to possibly help them all too. Correct?
Correct. Correct. But we were lucky enough to get that millage.
If, if they get their millage, they're not going to help, help us out.
Number of years ago, there was a county that number of years ago, there was a county and I'm going to say it was Grand Traverse. Um, they had a their fund balance was really healthy and their road commission got into a, got into a problem. If I'm not mistaken, they had like five hundred thousand dollars that the board allocated to the road commission. Help them out. Okay. But they had the fund balance to do it. Now, if you look back at history, back in the seventies and eighties before Headley, every year, there was one year that our, our, uh, our tax collections went up twenty-five percent. And we got that money and that's, that's back in the day when we had money, but then Headley come along in nineteen ninety-four, which capped us at the amount of inflation. So, um, but if we're going to do this, I think it would have to be, we would have to put that on the ballot, yes, for this year, but I don't think we need, it would be hoof us to have other people going for a millage too. In other words, we'd have one out there for a full mill for the county. And you got five other entities that put it on there too. So then it, it, add up all five of them. Are any of them going to pass?
All I want is I want to make sure this is fully vetted. That's all I'm asking.
Well, you're the one that can do that by talking to your people, talking to people and presenting it and find out what their ideas are. That's vetting it.
Makes, when I make decisions on this border or anything else that I do, I make sure that it's fully vetted. If we can talk about this in two weeks and bring the players in, I feel very comfortable with that.
We don't need to bring any players in. I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're trying to do with other than money the waters.
I'm not.
Doesn't change it. It doesn't change the fact that we need to do something. Am I right, Ken?
I agree with that, Bob.
I want just fully vetted. I want to make sure when I make a decision, it's fully vetted.
That's a big word.
It is a big word. Yeah.
We can, I'll put it, I'd be happy to put it on the work session for the next time.
Thank you.
No, that's an easy fix.
So then we would.
I know, I just.
And then we need to put it on for a motion, the first meeting in April?
That's, that's how I see it.
Yep. Yep.
That enough time to get it on the ballot?
Could be.
Yep.
Mark?
As long as the wording.
As long as the wording is correct, which would be the next, next thing is, is they have the wording correct, how it's going to appear on the ballot and that would be for the August, whatever eighth or whatever the the date is.
Yeah, that last one, that was so convoluted with all those programs, you know, we're going to, money, if we got it, was going to go to MSUE and. it was going to go to childcare, and it was going to go here, and it was going to go there. Um, yeah.
Well, I worked pretty hard on it, so I don't think it was that convoluted.
Well, what did I say? The people.
Right.
They kind of earmarked it for specialty projects instead of just putting it into the general fund for the benefit of all departments of the county.
You know, and it, it could be a problem too, because if you're going to ask for money that you don't need, that's the first question that's going to come out of their mind. What do you need, need the money for? Okay, we'll put it back on. Um, we can get copies of what Jamie Hauserman got from us for everybody, right, Jody? But we can take a good, good, hard look at it, and we'll put it on for the next work session, okay? Um, you know, when it comes to townships though, townships have their business and county has their own business. Okay, be back here at ten o'clock, and we'll stay right on schedule. Thank you. Melvin, would you please leave us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Onto item number three, please. Roll call of board members. Teresa.
Muckenthaler.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Melvin.
Here.
Russo. Melbourne.
Here.
Hey, item number four, approval of the agenda, please.
This is Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any further comments from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melvin.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo. Melbourne.
Yes.
Okay, item number five, motion passes on the agenda. Motion number five, approval of the minutes for the meetings of two-nine-twenty-ten, twenty-twenty-two, two-twenty-three of twenty-twenty-two, and a special meeting on three-two of twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion been made. Motion, motion was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the minutes for February ninth, February twenty-third, and March second. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time in regards to the minutes? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Okay, claims and accounts, please. You are up, Teresa, with Class As.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
So move.
I'll second. I'll second that. Motion was made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Schneider to pay Class As in an amount of nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Any comments from any commissioner at this time in regards to Class As? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melvin.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Claims and accounts.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to pay claims and accounts in an amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Any questions regarding to claims and accounts from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Hey. Thank you, Teresa. Item number seven, public comment in regards to any unagenda items at this time, please, from the need public. Uh, this is, this is public comment in regards to agenda items only. Brian, can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I can, guys. I, I, I realize that. My apologies. I, um, I can wait till the end. Um, I do have a ten thirty, but I'll, I'll see if I can jump back on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other public comment in regards to agenda items only? Nope, okay. All right, item number eight, Administrator Controller Report.
Good morning. Um, lawsuit update. We have the Courage versus Roscommon County Treasurer, which has been stayed pending the outcome of the larger scale State of Michigan Fox versus eight hundred and fifty townships. Um, so that will look at um, essentially where we go with whether or not the payout will be simply a retroactive payout or will include additional interest, et cetera, for um, foreclosed tax foreclosure houses with that. Um, as we are sitting in this meeting, the Chill versus Roscommon County Court of Appeals oral arguments are being presented. Um, I do have Noel um, listening in on that for us this afternoon. It looks like um, you will be able to view it on the Court of Appeals YouTube page after it has finished today. So at some time this evening, you can sit down with your um, glass of iced tea and watch those oral arguments yourself. Um, it'll probably be two, two to four weeks before we actually have an answer on the Court of Appeals decision for that case. There is no change in status on Mock versus Roscommon at Al, which involves the um, death in our jail, the POAM sheriff's arbitration. We have currently stayed the arbitration to work on coordinating um, a agreement to save costs on the actual arbitration. Um, personally, I'm not going to hold my breath. I am two weeks into trying to reach out to members outside of Roscommon County to uh, establish and coordinate a meeting in regards to the policy and have not had any word back yet. So I have communicated that to our attorney. Um, so as of right now, that's where we stand, but I'm sure in another month, I'm pretty sure I'll be telling you that we're going back to arbitration, so. Opiate suit, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and our Attorney General's Office will be hosting an opioid settlement webinar series in April for the county, and that is where we will learn um, exactly how, how much, and what the timeframes are um, for monies coming in to that. My best guess is we'll be looking at funneling that into some sort of county-wide um, drug abuse prevention programs is, is where we'll probably be, be going, which obviously our county, that is a good thing. Quick legislative update, there is um, House Bill five-zero-five-four. I had forwarded that to you last week, and essentially, the important part for us is, this is um, a bill that would provide specifics amount of funding for local units um, to put towards their pensions, unfunded pensions. So we are above sixty percent, um, and there is going to be roughly two hundred and fifty million allocated for that, that underfunding amount. Um, it can't exceed five percent of the total available funds. In order for somebody to be eligible, the following strings have been attached. Um, the grant has to be applied first to pension systems so that the system is one hundred percent funded. Um, the section is that we have already, these are things we've actually already done, adopted the most recent mortality tables, um, assume discount rates and rate of returns as presented by MERS. We are already there. Make all actuarially determined contributions, which we currently do, and a little bit more. And then the other one that Noel and I have been working on is refunding any retiree healthcare. Um, as you remember, our only retiree healthcare is that small portion for those unions um, between the ages of sixty-two and sixty-five, basically. So there is also another bill, two sets of bills out there, and I'm sure that Commissioner Melvin's already aware of these. But Senate Bill seven-eighty-three and seven-eighty-four, it establishes a refundable income tax credit program um, for property tax exemptions for veterans. So it changes the mechanism for how that money is um, reduced and makes whole counties for that money that currently we have to take off every year, so. Um, nice and steady in the office right now, which is nice, just workers' compensation audit information, which we do annually. Um, twenty-twenty-one sales and use tax, um, this is the time of year where we're really concentrating. I'm really concentrating on twenty-twenty-one um, in preparation for the budget, making sure that everything is accounted for and accounting processes have happened the way they are, and that all the accruals are taken care of before our auditor shows up in May. Um, I have continued to participate in the Juvenile Justice Funding Reform Work Group, which is looking at that block grant proposals, um, who would be in charge, what those mechanisms would be. Um, it, it's a little, it sounds good, but it's, it's, I don't know, it's fraught with holes, so. Um, I did attend the RCTA authority meeting. I did let them know that the Board of Commissioners was seeking more information on a increase, proposed increase to millage. Um, and I do believe the director has reached out to our chairman to schedule a meeting to review some of those financials. I attended a virtual FOIA update training uh, hosted by the State of Michigan. That was free. Those are my favorite. I have good news. Um, Eagle has authorized funding for Fungy Moth. Those are the new names for Gypsy Moth, just so you know, um, of the South Higgins Lake State Park and possibly North State Park and Ram. Um, while North State Park and Ram are in Crawford County, um, because we have funds to spray, we can let them piggyback on our spray for that. Plus, uh, I think we all know that reduction um, in North State Park and the Ram Center is beneficial for uh, a large, large portion of our residents. If those parks are uh, not filled, then we are missing people coming in to spend money in Holton Lake and Roscommon, so. Um, I have also reached out to Eagle after our last special meeting in regards to um, our need for another extension of the permit for the lake level control structure on Holton Lake. Um, this has been referred up to the Eagle Dam Safety Committee Review People. Um, they're going to start early and start looking at that and see where we stand. Uh, they probably won't get out there till the spring because there's not much to see in the winter, so. Um, I've been, started doing last month biweekly meetings with a couple of our newer department heads, um, Brittany and GIS, and then Vanessa in Emergency Management. So that's actually been going pretty well, just to make sure that they know that we're um, here. Um, I'm interested and I need to know, you know, what they need in order to make them successful. Um, Julie survived her first weeks, and so did the department heads as a whole of the change to Class As and claims and the, claims and accounts. Um, and I think it went pretty well, so that's all.
Okay. Any commissioner have any questions for the Administrator Controller in regards to her report, please? No? Yes, no? Ready? Moving on to correspondence. Uh, item A, MAC Legislative Conference Update from two-eighteen of twenty-two. Item B, Shaboygan County Resolution in regards to the return of state workers to the in-person operations. Item C was a MAC update for week of two-twenty-five, twenty-two. Item D, Roscommon County Community Foundation Friends for Safe Schools Report, Financial Report. Item E, Public Hearing Notice in regards to Holton Lake Improvement Boards of Practicality and Review of Apportionments. Stop me if anybody's got any questions here, okay? Item F, uh, Roscommon County Food Pantry Letter in regards to uh, Chris Kraft as in appointed, new appointed Executive Director. Item G, Muskegon County Resolution in regards to honoring Black History Month. H A R P A Status Report from Cherry Capital. Believe they're giving us that on a monthly basis. Item I, MSU Extension, March twenty-twenty-two Learning Programs. Uh, J, MSU March twenty-twenty-two Programs. Item K, Gypsy Moth Program Information, Residents May Add Acreage. Item L, Michigan Conference, Conference Conservation Tree Selection and Planning Workshop, so I think that's your time, one time of year that you can order your trees. And item M was a, a letter, a thank you letter from Lee and John Cosima in regards to our Treasurer's Office. Rebecca was here at her other meeting, but it was a nice letter um, that the Treasurer's Office reached out and helped these individuals with uh, not exactly what it shared, but something to do with their property tax or something. I'm not exactly sure what it was, but anyway, that I commend the Treasurer's Office, and she mentioned uh, Marcy and Rebecca both by name in the letter, so that letter is included. Any commissioners have any comments in regards to correspondence, please? Okay, hearing or seeing none. Under monthly department reports. Item A was a Central Dispatch Report. B, Animal Control for January twenty-sixth, January of twenty-twenty-two, and the Animal Shelter Regular Report for January twenty-second, so. Questions in regards to monthly reports? Okay, item eleven, any visitors, please, that like to be recognized at this time, please?
Like to recognize uh, Mary Frye, COA, Mr. Chair?
Morning. I seen you over there. I guess I recognize you. Item twelve, unfinished new business. American Rescue Plan Projects Update. Um, that's on there, and uh, I believe our controller has the update on what's going on with our monies, right?
Right, very slow. Um, I do have just a couple of questions for you as well, working forward. Obviously, everything that has been um, received by us has been dispersed at this point in time. Um, we are halfway through the process for the changing um, of the array systems over in the jail. The great news is um, as soon as it thawed, the materials are ready and available to, to be put in. Um, and our new Director of Facilities and Maintenance Bill is all excited for that project, Lieutenant. So yay, somebody's excited. Um, it is a great thing, so, so those will be happening. Um, I have the quarterly reporting to send out to all of the current recipients. Um, then I will have that information to be put to the federal government in April. My question to the Board of Commissioners is, would you like a kind of formal presentation at the end of April of what everyone has done with that money so far? Is that something you'd like me to put together for you?
I think that'd be appropriate. Everybody, everybody else agreement?
Okay, and that's it? Perfect.
All right. But, okay. Item number thirteen, motions and resolutions. Teresa, you are up again, please.
Move to amend the Compensation Classification Policy effective April first, two thousand twenty-two by removal of the following sentence from section, section G one. Employees whose starting rate was at the minimum pay range will receive a step increase after six months of employment.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Melbourne to amend the Compensation Classification Policy effective April twenty, April first, twenty-twenty-two. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Item number fourteen, committee reports, please. Okay, go ahead.
I attended the airport meeting, a special meeting last week. Agenda, meeting, nine-one-one Authority Board, and Claims and Accounts. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I had the special meeting and Claims and Accounts.
Okay, Ken?
Um, Veterans Affairs Committee Meeting. We assisted veterans' families uh, in, in the death of four veterans in the county. We provided medical transportation to medical appointments for twenty-four veterans.
Was that through transportation, Ken?
That's through the minibus, yes.
Through the minibus?
We found that with trying to keep volunteer drivers and, and just getting them the mileage and, and keeping them.
Right.
It, it was just too much of a problem. We didn't, uh, you know, we're not supposed to specialize in transportation where the minibus is and they're able to schedule all these trips, take care of the veterans very well.
Plus, they take on all the liability.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Right. Could they give us a to- could Keith get us a total list, total from that program from last year?
A total of how much was spent in the last year?
How many people they transmitted? How many, just simple, how many people did they transport? Next time.
Okay.
Not today.
Get that for a total number.
Not today.
Uh, just for example, uh, the most recent month it was, uh, twenty-four, the month before that was more.
I just, uh, down the road.
Okay, the month before was thirty-one, so. The, um, programs to enhance the living of, of, of veterans and their families in the county is growing. We're going to have a, a horseback riding. Um, a fly-in is set for May twenty-first. A veteran and one person of their choice can take a plane ride. We've got, uh, we're working on getting the bowling set up at Fred's again. They're opening up their bowling. Uh, we've got the canoe ride, the mini golf, the petting zoo, the howling pumpkin, uh, a, a lot of events for veterans. Um, we had, uh, last Friday I was in the office and we had a, um, female veteran and a, and a daughter that were, uh, approaching a homeless situation. And on Sunday, the sheriff's office became involved in this situation and, uh, helped us out in, uh, getting this, uh, female veteran and her daughter placed in the American Inn in Holton Lake and gave them the sheriff's department credit card. So they had housing on a cold night. And then, uh, we reimbursed the sheriff's department on Monday and we're working on arranging permanent housing. But that's a, it's a good thing to be coordinating with other departments like the minibus and the sheriff's department. So on a weekend when our office is not open, they know how to reach out to somebody from the veterans and, and, and get them taken care of. Um, I still have a problem. I know we talked about the, the gypsy moth spray program in a meeting a little while ago and I asked for some numbers to be provided to me. The, uh, the idea of spraying eight hundred acres in each township still, to me, does not sound right. Um, this is an election year. We got primary elections coming up. I, I, there's a potential for this gypsy spray program and, and the problems that other people are gonna have. I know, Mark, you've, you've dealt with citizens that are pretty upset about the sponge moth, I'm sorry, sponge moth. And, um, if, if you're gonna spray places that contribute only fifteen hundred dollars and, and slight a township that I represent, like Garrish Township, that contributes forty thousand dollars, it, it could play, you, your opponent could seize upon this i- as a hot button issue and, and, and look at you and say, well, you just sat back and allowed them to do that. They took our millage money and used it to spray places that don't contribute very much. So, like the road, the road patrol millage is a portion back to the townships in the equal amount that they contributed. I think that would be a fair way to do this with the gypsy moth. With the sponge moth program, I'm gonna have a hard time with that. Um.
That's better than what, that's better than what it's supposed to be called, Ken. You should see that long word.
Right. I mean, if, if I was, you know, representing, uh, Osobin, Bacchus and Nestor Township, if I'd say, oh, yeah, this is, this is really great because we contribute hardly any money and we're gonna get the same amount of acres sprayed as what Garrish Township that contributes forty thousand dollars to the spray program out of the hundred and eighty thousand. So I would just caution the other commissioners here that, you know, if you're gonna, i- i- if this is okay with you for your districts too, so be it. I'm just registering my complaint because I have to go back and I, I, I represent the people that put me in office and I don't like the idea having to go back to them and a little while and try and explain to them why they didn't get sprayed and somebody else did. Thank you.
Hey, um, Mr. Milburn?
District Health, Development. Work, special meeting, and it's not a committee, but Ken and I always go to the veterans' get-together, which is preceding the airport, which is, uh, which is a nice gathering of veterans. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Um, there again, Mr. Milburn mentioned the special meeting on the second. Uh, back on the twenty-third, I did attend the Health Department Meeting that was held in Harrison. Uh, Agenda Meeting. David, did you mention you were at the Agenda Meeting?
Okay, Agenda Meeting was last Thursday at, at nine o'clock. And I, uh, attended Bacchus Township's meeting this past Monday night, so.
All I got. Also under committee reports, there's a Economic Development Committee Report for February there. And, uh, Mr. Milburn, I wasn't able to, uh, attend the last Economic Development Meeting. You said you were there?
Sir.
How things go?
Uh, I think, is Brenda, is Brenda on here? Or a second? Yeah, I was there. Did you get a report on it?
Uh, well, I wasn't there. I was kinda listening. I wondered what happened.
Briefly afterwards, the big thing there was, uh, Mr. Petrie announced that he was running for office for state rep.
He'd already known to that here the last time he was here.
He was there and he announced it. He's at another meeting.
But he's.
Great import that I can think of right now.
He's not in our area, though.
Uh, I know he lives over, I think, in Crawford.
He's in Ogama.
Ogama?
Yep.
It's a new district.
Now, I got a phone call from our Michigan Works Director and he attended his element. Remember Dan?
Yeah, yeah, he was there. Matter of fact, he was there. And, uh, the big thing is we're moved over to, uh, the core to have our meetings, which is over by Pioneer Hill Marina. That's a new, new, uh, location for us. It's, uh, it seems to be a nice location. Nice big open parking lot and it seems centrally located. I did really prefer the one over by the, um, by the COA. It seemed more centrally located, but the nice thing about the new location, it's a bigger, a bigger room and we have a bigger screen, so I think it's gonna fit to our, that our, uh, for, fit our needs very admirably.
Great. All right, thank you. Item fifteen, public comment, please.
Mary?
Yes. Come on up, Mary.
I haven't talked to anybody yet.
He didn't, he didn't put his hand up. Come on up, Mary. Why don't you go ahead? You can be more comfortable if you sit. And I see the green lights are already on, so you are all set to go. Yep.
All right. Um, my name is Mary Frye. I am the new executive director at the Roscommon County Commission on Aging. I'm actually six months in. Woo-hoo.
Wow, six months flies.
No longer do.
That's right. I'm not shiny anymore. Um, I just, I wanted to come and briefly speak to the commission. I did bring some of our, um, newsletters, um, so I, I encourage you to look at those. They do have a lot of good information in them. I especially would like you to see the numbers of Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals that we are currently serving in the county. Those numbers are going up. Um, as you probably would be aware, those numbers dropped pretty dr- drastically during COVID. We had to close some centers and only function out of the Holton Lake Center. But, but our numbers are going up. Um, our numbers are going up drastically in our in-home services program, which is respite care, um, housekeeping, um, and personal care for our clients. Um, we are filling out on an average between three and seven new intake forms a day. Our, our numbers are going up significantly and people that need help. Unfortunately, we're limited by our budget and the number of employees that we can do to serve those people. So, we are getting into the place where, and we're in the same boat as a lot of people in your hearing that were short-staffed. Um, we are going to have to start triaging those, um, uh, applications for help because we just don't have enough staff and we just don't have enough money to be able to help all the people in Roscommon County that need help. Um, as you know, we are pretty heavy in residents that are sixty-two and older. Our baseline is sixty, so, um.
Well, you're looking at them right here.
Right, exactly. That's why I keep going back and forth because, I mean, we know. Oh, but on the other hand, we don't because I had no idea before taking the job the number of people in this county that are in dire straits. All of us are blessed to be able to go home to a warm house and a warm bed and food in the refrigerator. We have a lot of people, especially on the Meals on Wheels, that, um, we're the only people they see. They can't get out and get any groceries because that's one of our qualifications. If they can drive, then they can take care of themselves. So, our Meals on Wheels program, the people often are, we are the only people that they see. Our list of people that we do wellness checks on, which is also a part of our Meals on Wheels program, is also growing. Um, and, um, it's an unfortunate thing, but often our Meals on Wheels driver will find someone deceased in their home because no one calls, no one visits. So, um, I do want to let the commissioners know that we will be pursuing a renewal of our one millage through the county. Um, I, I cannot tell you how much we appreciate that funding. It, without that, we would not be able to function. Um, but we will be, um, pursuing that one millage beyond the August ballot. So, I am going, I have actually already started working with, uh, Jody and Michelle to get our wording correct on that and get our, our language in so that we can get that on the ballot. This will be a renewal and I would, I did a lot of research and actually got some information back to Jody and Michelle with regard to the actual law that's on the books in Michigan that says we can only pursue up to one mill as a senior, um, agency. Um, there was a lot of verbal communication about that, but nobody seemed to have any paper. Well, I'm very big on having paper. So I was able, at the state of Michigan, pursued that with some of their attorneys and we did get the language that says we are limited to one mill. I wish we could get more. I genuinely wish we could get more. Um, the book, uh, the law's been on the books since nineteen seventy-six. I'm actually gonna try to pursue that they look at that law again. Um, when we have a county of the population that we have here, um, is, as first a community that would be downstate or a county downstate, obviously, one mill is a big difference in that population, so. But I, um, will play within the rules and see if I can get the rules changed. Um, so, but I wanted to genuinely thank you for supporting the Commission on Aging. We are the only agency in Roscommon County that does what we do. I just learned that from, uh, the Department of Health and Human Services, that they look to us when they have clients that are in need. Um, so, um, I think that's everything that I have unless you have questions for me.
Um, I do. You, you often, you know what your fund balance is?
At this time?
Yes.
Like today?
Well, ballpark, ballpark, okay. Last, yeah, last audit, which was December, I think, or whatever.
Balance, true. We were able to carry over some funding from last year, um, to help with this year. But because of the growth that we've had in need, we are already, um, pulling money out of that fund that we were able to carry over. So, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my, I, I can, next time I come, I can come again next month and, and bring my numbers with me. Um, I, I just would be guessing to tell you a number.
Okay.
Give me the numbers at our next COA meeting and I can give them to the chairman.
And I do have the, um, I do have a report for the COA meeting that, um, is given every, every month. Um, I just, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Chairman, I just didn't think to.
Oh, I'm just, just, I'm just wondering what it was.
Um, the last I knew, we were, um, uh, pulling out of the fund to the tune of about, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of what we carried over. And it will be bigger than that, but we've had a lot of issues. We've had freezers that have broken down. We've had air, air, um, controllers on, on, uh, Holton Lake Center that broke down. We had to put some new roof on Holton Lake Center. So these are all things that are sort of unexpected costs, but still have to be dealt with.
Right.
You know, a new freezer runs to the tune of sixty-five hundred dollars. So, um, but I, I will bring something for you.
The reason I say that, Mary, is because I've been involved and, and Ken, right along with me, been involved in the county finances of the general fund. And when we meet with Jim Anderson, our accountant, and we strive to have a fifteen percent fund balance, which is equivalent to ninety days. So I always ask that question of any entity that I get in here. So, I was just wondering what your fund balance is and how, and if you didn't get any funding in, stop today, how, how many days could you operate? I don't just ask that question to you, I ask it of everybody.
All that question would be asked, so I will try to make sure that, Mark, you have the answers to those questions.
Today's question is today.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ken?
Yes, Ken?
All right.
Does the, that's okay, Mary. Uh, does the Commission on Aging still produce a monthly letter?
Yes, and I brought several copies. They're sitting right there.
Very good. Uh, do you have a mailing or you mail those out to people or do they need to pick them up at the center?
We do not have a mailing, but we do, um, county distribution. So each of our center managers has a list of businesses and/or churches or other areas that might, might be interested in having our newsletters. So they go out and distribute those within the, within their community, Holton Lake, Roscommon and St. Helen. Um, and then we do have multiples at the, at the office and we do have, um, the little clear plastic, you know, outside, um, at the center so you can pick them up there inside also.
They're right.
Sell them, Ken, because honestly, we don't have the funds to be able to do that.
That's okay. I don't know if we used to get one delivered here.
And we get them every, every month. They sit outside Jody's door. They're, they're, they're right there, every month.
I just wanted to know where I could find one. I, I haven't seen one for a while.
You probably walk, you probably walk, you probably walk by them more times than not.
Where to find it and it's, uh.
And there's one corner, an upper right-hand corner, that tells you number of meals served, Meals on Wheels served, in-home services. Um, and those, to me, are probably the most important thing in there. It's so that you can just look at a glance to see how many people that we're serving within the county.
And, and the food really is good. We went over there last week to have, to have lunch and the food is exceptional. Uh, what a, what a great group of staff. I have noticed the numbers seem to be climbing back up as we get out of the COVID. But again, on behalf of myself, just as a citizen, I'm glad it is, as your leadership, as a director. But, you know, at the end of the day, we have such exceptional employees over there. What a great group of folks. I mean, at the end of the day, like you pointed out, the M O W drivers, they are sometimes the point of contact. That's all they ever see.
All they ever see.
So that, you know, we don't necessarily see that as, 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 you know, in our situation. But I do know the reports that I hear, and I've been on that board for many, many years now. That is the big, that's a big deal, those M O W drivers.
That's our life's blood. Our Meals on Wheels is our number one priority.
We are, so to speak, back to normal with in-center meals.
Um, I, I think that we haven't really gotten quite to pre-COVID numbers, but we are definitely climbing back up.
You're back open. I know your numbers may not be, but you're, you're, but you're, in that case, you're, you're open now.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know here.
Nice days, which in the last couple of weeks have closed us a few times.
All right.
Thanks.
Well, uh, I see right away, there's a thing here promoting the Veterans Coffee Hour at the airport. The, 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 does the Veterans Office pay for that or is this your public service?
It's a courtesy of the Commission on Aging.
Thank you very much for that. And also, I'd like to recognize, uh, Deb Looney, who is a Commission on Aging employee, correct?
Mm-hmm.
She sponsored the Veterans Coffee Hour last month in- individually.
Correct.
Very, very nice thing of her to do. So pass along our, thanks for doing that, right, Mark?
That is an amazing asset. And if, when I interviewed for this position, I interviewed for this position under the guys that I know how to run a business. And I am looking at this as running it as a business. So the numbers are constantly in my mind and looking for ways for us to be able to continue what we do, but do it at a lesser cost. Um, so, um, I know that, Mark, on our board, I present this at every board meeting, but I'm really trying to make sure that we spend the taxpayers' dollars with as much, you know, um, integrity as we possibly can. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you for being here today.
Okay, any other public comment out there, please? Nobody in front of me? Andy's saying no. Onto, uh, item number sixteen, adjournment.
Don't move, Mr. Chair. Don't move, Mr. Chair.
On favor, sanctified by Saint I.
Do you think that it's gonna happen? Don't you think it's gonna happen? Or do you think it'd be better to go from one